Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We've got, still got seats left, it looks like. All right. This is, uh, it's, uh, February the 6th, 2018. We're here at 6 o'clock at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Senior Pastor Alan Latta with the Generation Church. He will be giving our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by our Councilman Gary Couch. All rise, please.
Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus and in accordance to your word, praying for kings and all that are in authority, that we may live in a quiet and peaceable land. We pray, Lord, that order would prevail in the meeting today, and that justice would be served, and that wisdom would be revealed, and that timing would be trusted in. Your guidance give us ears to hear one another, and wisdom to know when to move and what to wait on. In Jesus' name, we ask for your blessings upon this meeting. Amen.
May he be. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose rule we have the justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one community.
It is always good to see such a crowd out there, joining us in the city council meeting. And especially tonight, we've got several awards, and I'm gonna start off with a real special award. I'm gonna go down here to the podium. I'm gonna call upon Lee Daniels to come up front here, if you would, please. We're gonna get you up here one last time, Lee. Go ahead and stand out there. I don't know if anybody's ever been to the P&amp;Z meetings, but, uh, Lee Daniels has chaired that, or been the chair of that for many, many years. Lee has served on the Parks and, Parks Board, the P&amp;Z, for 37 years, folks. Thirty-seven years. And he's done a really good job for us. He's, uh, I told him the other day, I said, "You know, I've not, I've known you for several years, and I'm just assuming you were fine-tuned by the time I got to see you." So I don't know what it was like when he first started, but, uh, he does a really good job up there, and, uh, we're really gonna miss him. And, uh, it's really, those are important boards, and, uh, he's stayed with us for a long time, and, uh, so, uh, we're gonna recognize him tonight for his service to, uh, to that board. We have a certificate of appreciation that we want to leave Daniels. On behalf of the citizens of Granbury and its support staff, it is my honor and privilege to present you with a certificate of appreciation in recognition of your outstanding qualities of leadership and dedication during the years you served on boards and commissions for the city of Granbury, Texas, notably as the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We want to thank you for the time, the professionalism, and the energy that you have spent serving the citizens of Granbury from 1981 to 2018. Your contributions and positive influences to this community have been duly recognized and are greatly appreciated. It's given under my name, my hand, and the seal of the city of Granbury this 6th day of February 2018. Congratulations, Lee, and we do appreciate that. And with that, I would like for everybody to look up at the screen there and recognize that, that is taken 2014, wasn't it, Scott? He was, uh, Lee was, he was recognized by the State of Texas, right there. The State of Texas for his accomplishments and his service, so, uh, not a lot of people get that, and we're honored that, uh, Lee was presented with that then. Tonight, we'd like to resume with a token of our appreciation. This is the bar. And remember us right here.
When I first started, we had a meeting where we needed one. We didn't have a schedule. Thank you very much.
That's, uh, that's some dedication there, stay on boards like that, and, uh, and to serve your community. There's been times when, uh, some of those boards, as you all know, we, uh, we struggled getting people to apply for them, and, uh, Lee, he, you could always, you could always rest assured his name was gonna be on there for the next year, and, uh, and he's gonna be serving, and, uh, his, uh, his peers, they thought enough of him, and they left him in that position to chair that, uh, chair that board. And, uh, like I said, he did a good job, there's gonna be some, uh, big shoes to fill right there. So, our next presentation, and Lee, I've got this certificate for you here, too. Here we go. Our next presentation, this is a, kind of a first for us, but we feel it's really important that we, uh, we recognize some folks in our staff. As you know, we have a lot of different jobs that are involved with, uh, running the city, and a lot of times these folks, uh, they need to get certified, they need to get certificates. Sometimes they need to, uh, go to schools and things like that, to be able to perform their jobs even better, and get that, uh, special certificate, or that special certification to do the specialty jobs that they need to do. And you're gonna, you're gonna hear about some of these today. I mean, we have things all the way from, uh, getting certified to, to spray for mosquitoes, to getting certified to work in this brand-new water waste, this water plant that we have. And, uh, it takes out, uh, some, a lot of times it takes some of their own time, some of their time after hours, or, or sometimes going out of town to, to get this certification. So it's some, a real dedication that these employees do to get this certification. So each year, we have several people that obtain this, so we want to recognize each year these employees that have went, uh, that extra mile to do those kind of things. So tonight, we have a, uh, a, uh, several employees that we're gonna recognize, and as I call your name, if you're here, if you would, just come up here, go by there, and, uh, we'll line up there for our, our photo op, you know, so, but, uh, if you will, you just come through there, and we'll, uh, we'll recognize each and every one of yous. Our first one is Elizabeth Bailey, Certified Government Financial Officer. Next one is Brett Magnum, Certified Planner. Aaron Heathickton, Pestified, Applicat, Pesticide Applicator License. And by the way, you know, there's been several years where we weren't able to spray enough because you have to have that certification. We can't just put somebody out there in a truck to go spray. And so these people stepped up and said, "Hey, I, I wanna get certified so that we can have enough people out there when the mosquitoes get bad, to where we have enough people out there to spray for that." We also have Heather Walls, a Pestified, Pesticide Applicator License. Heather with us tonight? Our next one, one of my favorites here, is Jeannie Stacks, Building Inspector Certification. We've got Eric Swaim, Fire Inspector Certification. And these, and these next folks, like I said, we've got that new, uh, water plant out there, and it's real important, and we got the right people to do the jobs out there, and some of these jobs, without that certification, we can't get the job done, and they have to have that certification. First one being Daniel Marge, A Water Certification. I remember when Roger used to change my oil in my car out here, he owned the lube shop, you know? Now I look at him. Waylon Clayton, A Sea Surface Water Certification. Our next one is Jared Butler, The Seawater Distribution Certification. Our next one is Kent Barnes, Spillman Administrator Certification. Kevin Clapp, Master Peace Officer Certification. Next one is Brandon Duckett, Master Peace Officer Certification. We had Chris Weston, A Master Peace Officer Certification. We got Jared Wigginton, Master Peace Officer Certification. Chase Miller, Intermediate Peace Officer Certification. Keisha Watson, Intermediate Peace Officer Certification. And we have McKevan Singletary, Basic Peace Officer Certification. So folks, these are the 2017 recipients of all the certifications that were required to, uh, most of the time do their jobs, and, and also going, and getting those certifications to move theirself up to them next level. So we want to thank all of them for their dedication to, uh, improve their job skills and taking that extra time to, uh, accomplish these, these tasks, and to, to receive this certification, because we know it takes a lot of time out of your, uh, after-hours and whatever. At this time, I'm sure Chris Kaufman would like to say a few things, too. Chris is the, uh, the manager of all these folks.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to offer our sincere appreciation for the investment in your time to take these courses. I know many of them you do at night, and a lot of y'all have to travel somewhere to take these classes, and we appreciate it. And I just want the rest of the folks here to know that this is a sample of our whole workforce, and we're so blessed with trained people that excel in their specific, in their particular field, and are interested in, in getting those higher certifications. You know, you don't have to take the continuing education and, and serve long enough to be a master police officer, but these guys have chosen to do so, and, and intermediate, and we appreciate it. And, you know, a Class A water license is an option, but you know what it means, so much more to us to have our operator excel and get the highest level of training that they can get. And we're also blessed with the city council that will budget the funds to help pay for that training. So with, with all that said, thank you, council, and thank you, uh, team, and let's go for excellence. Thank y'all.
what is the, uh, most rewarding part of your job?" That right there is a rewarding part of my job, when you can recognize your staff, your people like that out there, and all the people in our community that do the things that keeps this community, uh, what, uh, what the taxpayers pay for, you know, and that's the, the community that you see out there. So, once again, thank, thank all those folks for what they do for us. At this time, we're gonna go into the citizen participation, and I normally read all the rules and all that for the citizen participation, but the first, the one person that has signed up knows all the rules, so I'm just gonna call him up to the podium, Mr. J.C. Campbell.
Thank you for the opportunity to come to appear before this, uh, this council. It's, uh, it's really a pleasure to, uh, to see where we are today. Uh, I think I have a way, Lee Daniels, did he leave? No, he's not, he's, I think I know how to get, get him back on board. Double his salary. Yeah. Yeah. That work, Lee Daniels? Huh? Lee Daniels, I saw, he, he came to, came to, uh, this city has offered his services in 81, and I was on the council then, and, and, uh, he's, he's really, they've really done a good job, you know, and I appreciate him, and, uh, say congratulations. Uh, my name is J.C. Campbell, and I live at 2222 Acton Road, Granbury. It's, uh, across the street from the Catholic Church. Uh, I'm not in the city, but, uh, the city's very important to me, and there's a lot of things that happen in Granbury that, that, that I'm really proud of. Uh, and one of them, one of the things is, is you, we honored the, the workers, the people who keep this city running and, and running right, is that we saw tonight, but I'd like to just say thanks to all the city employees, because through their dedication, it's really a pleasure to drive through town and to see the streets swept, and to see the, the trash, it's very, to me, I don't, I don't see a whole lot of it, but it's nice to know that the citizens of Granbury are getting this kind of service from the city, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into our consent agenda. We have three items on there. The first one being consider approving the city council meeting minutes. The second one being consider approving the InstaForm Technology Change Order 1 to amend the existing contract price for the 2018 sewer rehabilitation project. And the third one being consider adopting ordinance 1812, amending and proving certain international codes related to building, electrical, plumbing, swimming pool, fuel gas, energy conservation firewood, fire, food establishments, and property maintenance. Council, you've had an opportunity to look through these consent agenda items. At this time, are there any items on there you would wish to discuss, or to remove off at the, uh, consent agenda and move down to the deliberation agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. The first item is to consider adopting a resolution of general support for the applicants for the, uh, that filed the housing tax credits. And I'm gonna turn this over to our city manager, Chris Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you are aware, every year, there's a, a program that allows developers to apply for, uh, 9% tax credits for housing, and we always, uh, have received those requests and put together resolutions. But beginning last year, we hired a consultant to work with our housing authority to, uh, allow these projects to, to be in coordination with the housing authority. And at this time, I would like to introduce Ramon, where Ramon comes forward, and he's our consultant, uh, with Romel Consulting, and he'll give us a short report. But basically, I want to pull off item A, it's Resolution 18-03. That company has decided not to move forward, uh, at this time, because it is so competitive, they're gonna award one of these projects in the entire metroplex area, the entire 13-county area, and, as you'll remember, that score sheet that we had last time, there were five, and so now then it's down to two applications, or three applications, excuse me, uh, being applied for, two of them in, in Granbury, and one in another town across those in Collin County. So, uh, Ramon, I'll let you kind of tell some of the good stuff that you've accomplished for us this last year on these projects.
Indeed. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Again, my name is Ramon Gualhado Jr., 2205, uh, West Broadway Street, Fort Worth, Texas, 76102. Uh, so yes, last time I spoke was January 16th, brought to y'all the attention that we had five applications for Granbury for 9% tax credit, uh, project development. Um, in working with those five developers, you know, it's all based on scores, and as , uh, city manager said, that only one is gonna be awarded in Region 3 rural area. Uh, so, given that, everyone started looking at their scores, started communicating with us, and, uh, partnering with the housing authority, the Granbury Housing Authority, and slowly those that felt that they weren't gonna make the cut, you know, top two, slowly started kind of dropping out. At the time of, uh, you know, the agenda needed to be posted, we had three resolutions of support, we had agreed memorandum of understandings with the housing authority, and as we moved along, they started looking at their scores, and that's when, uh, Resolution 1803 decided to pull out. It is a financial investment. These developers are putting forth their own money to go for these developments. Win or lose, they do not get that money back. So it is a business decision at the end of the day, we understand that, we tell, uh, of course, you know, the housing authority that it's a business decision, and we understand that, we don't want anyone to go forward with the poor business decision that's gonna cost them money and end up being mad. Second of all, you know, our goal is to provide the workforce housing for the community of Granbury, and that's what we're doing. The two resolutions that are up is 1804 and 1805. Both of them are different structures in the sense that they provide, uh, different structures of, of units. They are all for seniors, this is 65 and above, so I do want to let, clarify that. Uh, we haven't got into the design development, uh, aspect of it, because we not gonna do that until the project is awarded. We do only see one other city as being our competition, and that is in Farmersville, and as, uh, a lot of our developers have said, we do believe that Granbury will win out. So we do foresee a, a, uh, a development being awarded for Granbury, as long as no , uh, points are lost in, in the final application process. Do y'all have any questions?
I might just add that it would be the only one awarded in the whole 13-county region, so.
Correct.
That's major.
Council, any questions for, uh, Ramon and city manager here at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, council, we, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the said resolution.
So moved.
Resolutions.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Gorgon. Council, any more discussion on this, uh, resolution? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, we're looking forward to it. Our next item is to consider adopting ordinance 18-13, establishing the distance from the nuclear plant that a multi-family development funded with low-income housing tax credits can be constructed in by the city of Granbury. So I'm gonna turn this one also over to our city manager, Chris Kaufman.
Mayor, council, um, this ties right in with this 9% tax credit housing that we just approved these resolutions for. Um, a new rule passed by the state, uh, prohibited the construction of, uh, this type housing within 10 miles of a nuclear plant. As y'all are aware, we have two nuclear plants in the state of Texas, and, uh, we've got a lot of apartment sites within that 10-mile radius, uh, that's already planted, and in our long, uh, comprehensive plan is, is destined to be apartments. And so the state did give us the option to, uh, change that from 10 miles to another distance, and so we've put together an ordinance that, uh, limits it to five miles. Uh, I don't know if you realize it or not, but, uh, where I live, I'm about, uh, eight and a half miles, uh, the way the crow flies from the nuclear plant. And so you can see all that land that is precluded from apartments being built under this program, uh, if we leave it at the 10 miles, which would kick it over past, uh, probably over towards Brahms in that area, so you can see the big circle that way. Uh, but anyway, we do have lots of, uh, need to change that, and so we've, we worked with Ramon, and he drafted this, we, we fine-tuned it a little bit to fit our city, and we've presented it to you for your consideration tonight. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Council, any questions for Chris on this issue? Chris, I got, you, you say we're gonna, within the five-mile radius.
We're, we're gonna make the limit.
The limit.
Nothing built within five miles of those applications can't be built in, within five miles.
Okay.
That's really outside our city limits, until we grow somewhere.
All right. Council, any more questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance 1813, establishing the, uh, the distance from the nuclear plant.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
And a second by Councilman, uh, Gorgon. Council, any more discussion on that, uh, ordinance? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing, considering adopting ordinance 1814, and I'm gonna call upon, uh, Scott Sobczek to pick him.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is an application, uh, specific use permit request by the applicant for the Bulls on the Beach event that we've seen in the past. Um, this is the location of the public beach, over by the, uh, convention center in the hotel. Uh, as we've seen in the past, they use the beach area to have a rodeo on the sands or grounds of the, uh, of the city-owned property. Uh, so in effect, the city has, has endorsed the SUP application request, the burden falls on the applicant, uh, the promoters of Bulls on the Beach, to present the request to P&amp;Z and City Council. In addition to the SUP, I also, uh, want to mention that this also addresses a code of ordinance requirements. We have a specific code of ordinance that says, "No person shall keep or bring a pet or other, other animal on the beach." Uh, the second portion of that is that it's an affirmative defense to prosecution, that if an animal or pet is brought on the beach, it's in conjunction with an event permit endorsed by City Council. So as a side comment, this, and, this approval of the SUP is that endorsement, we just want to make that, uh, mentioned for the record. So again, here's the common grounds, it's zone, uh, like commercial, uh, as with prior SUPs, what we did is we've, uh, solicited input from our police department to see if we had any complaints on prior SUPs issued for this event. There were none the previous year. Uh, the Plan and Zoning Commission recognized that in their deliberations. Also want to make, mention that a supplemental standard back to the zoning ordinance, that if a outside event of this nature is located within 300 feet of a residential property, zone property, that would be the area to the north, then it's a requirement that the applicant get signatures on those adjacent residential zone properties. If not, it prompts a three-quarter vote by, by both P&amp;Z and City Council. Your Plan and Zoning Commission moved unanimously to approve it as presented, based on the, uh, the past record of the event and the, uh, prior permit holder. Um, so that report is coming to you with. holder. So, that report is coming to you with two conditions tied to the SUP, that the term length shall be for those dates as specified by the applicant, March 8th through the 21st, and the event shall be done in accordance with the city's adopted event festival ordinance and approved event festival permit. So, if in the event the SUP is approved by Council tonight, they still have to go through the ministerial application of requesting event permit and providing the insurance and all that good stuff. That's it, Mayor. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. You know, as you know, we, this what's the, third year, fourth year for this, something like that?
Fifth.
Fifth, wow. But, you know, we, I was here when we first did this thing, and there were a lot of questions and concerns, but I think we weeded through all those. And from what I understand, they love to come to Granbury, is that right? This is a great place to have it, and we have a good turnout, and so, it's a really good event. So, appreciate what you guys do when you bring that event to Granbury, I really do. Council, you have any questions or concerns for Scott or the applicant out there, if they're out there in the audience?
Mayor, I've got one question.
Councilman Allen.
I really don't know who this is too, to be honest with you. But we've always furnished the equipment for him to load and unload his equipment to keep him from getting on the beach because he gets stuck with his truck. And if, I would, I'll make a motion to approve it, but let the city furnish the same equipment we did the last five years to load and unload it.
I'll direct that to the City Manager. I don't know if that's just a give me there, Chris, or we just roll that in, or what?
No, I think it's important that we do that tonight because we certainly are gonna be helping him with that. If, I mean, that's what we've done in the past, and we probably should put that clearly on the agenda, but I appreciate you catching that.
Okay.
And the Parks Department typically helps him with, you know, front-end loader. The trucks won't get stuck in the sand that way.
So, Mr., any more questions or concerns on that ordinance? So, Councilman Allen, if you are, you wanting to make a motion on that then?
Yes, Mayor. I'll make, make, already made it.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, yes, it is.
I'll second that.
Okay. Hey, let me back up just a little bit. My boss is yelling at me over there. This is a public hearing. So, let me open up the public hearing right now. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Like I said, the applicants are out there, Council. If you need to talk to those. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Now, Council, any more discussion on this item? We've heard discussion from Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen, do you care to make a motion then?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve this, and also adding in a motion that the city will furnish the equipment to load and unload the equipment for him.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the ordinance with the said assistance.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Council. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of mid-reform for a preliminary plat. And I'm gonna call upon Scott Sobchak to give us some information on that, if you would please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mr. Manager, what we see in the outline in purple is the parent tract. You can see that, give you an orientation. This is south of, South Meadows on State Highway 144, Morgan, just outside of our city limits contiguous to the city boundary, which is in the colored shaded area to the north. The area just north of the purple area is Mon Arms, to give you some reference point. And the school is in the yellow area. What's being proposed is to carve that parent tract into two proposed lots. You see the smaller area to the center upper level as Lot 1. The larger portion of that is Lot 2 to the south. What's being focused on as a part of this development is Lot 1. The applicant wants to place a RV boat-truck storage area on Lot 1. You can see the site plan that was presented along with the preliminary plat that's focused on on your screen. You can see the storage areas and bays, and it went through the DRC review process to make sure that it had adequate fire lanes. The supporting infrastructure is on the utility plan. What's being presented is tying into an existing water line. You can see it's in a slightly darker blue color to the north, transitioning to the proposed line, which is the lighter blue shaded color traversing through Lot 1, and then terminating at State Highway 144. So, as a part of this plat application, preliminary plat application, again, they're focusing on coming back with their engineering plans, filing the plat for Lot 1 only, and leaving Lot 2 as remaining future development in survey. So, we have our water line traversing through the property. We have our conceptual location of hydrants that have been through DRC review. There's one variance associated with that, and that is for sanitary sewer. Let's get this to work here. There we go. So, this little area here is a proposed office. That's the only built facility that's being proposed on the site, and the applicant is requesting to allow for a septic system to be permitted on-site to sustain that small little office area and not run sanitary sewer through the site at this time. The DRC looked at the variance request, and as a part of saying, okay, it's basically a one-service unit temporary facility to support an office. The DRC was looking at it more long-term and requested that the developer file a proposed easement. And you can see it here along traversing South Morgan. There's an existing sanitary sewer line on South Morgan. So, what DRC was fearful of is we would be left out in the cold and not have availability of bringing sanitary sewer to serve this larger area and extend it through the development at a later date. So, as a part of DRC negotiations and what went through the city engineer's office is if we could get at least easement to allow for the extension of a sanitary sewer line to serve this larger property, and it would gravely flow that direction, at least we're earmarking that. So, your staff went through, itemizing that toward your Planning and Zoning Commission, and your Planning and Zoning Commission recommended conditional approval of, let's get to the vote here. So, we have our, and here's your memo from your engineer, conditional approval of the variance pending the filing of the sanitary sewer easement. So, it's a, it's the conditional approval of the variance to allow for the OSSF septic system, provided that the easement be filed at the same time that Lot 1 be filed for record to support that development, is what's going on there. So, your Planning and Zoning Commission is coming forward with a conditional approval of the variance to allow for the septic system, provided that that is dovetailed together into the filing of the final plat for Lot 1, and then approval of the preliminary plat as presented. So, that's it, Mayor.
So, Scott, is that gonna, is that gonna require two motions then, or just one where you tie in as long as the conditional is with it?
Correct, Mayor. So, we'll need to act on the recommendation from P&amp;Z regarding the conditional approval of the variance first.
Okay.
And the condition being, as stated in the record, that the off-site easement on Lot 2 be filed for record at the same time Lot 1's filed for the final plat, and then approval of the preliminary plat as presented.
Very good. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Is the applicant out there? Is it, okay, thank you. So, the applicant is out there, Council. No one wishes to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concern on this item?
Mayor, I got a question to Scott. You're talking about the easement, and the way it looked on that picture, can you pull that back up?
Yes, sir.
It looks like those stored buildings go right up against that property line, doesn't it?
The storage buildings? No, so this is an undeveloped panhandle that goes to South Morgan.
Uh huh.
ACI storage is over here.
All right.
So, this is undeveloped property. See if I can get back to the aerial here. There we go. So, again, that easement would traverse through here in the undeveloped property on the west side.
Okay, it doesn't go all the way down to, down to where their property ends?
No. So, it would traverse, allowing us to open this area up. And then, when this develops, we would, based on the design when that develops,
Mm-hmm.
Run the remaining easements and sanitary sewer lines through there.
And if they wanna be tied on at that time, we could tie them on.
Right.
I have a question.
Our City Manager, Chris.
Well, this, you know, just looking at it, it looks pretty simple, and it's nice to see something refreshing and simple. But I do have a question about that road that currently goes to Mon Arms. And I'm wondering, is that gonna be a private road? Is that what that, is designed to be a private road?
I'm gonna defer to the engineer. It's my understanding that it's a fire lane, private drive.
Okay. Well, that's all I need to know.
Fire lane?
Thanks for your help.
So, they will improve it?
Is that right?
Yeah. We got walls with Baird Hampton Brown Engineering representing the owner of this property. That...
It will, it will be improved.
Correct. That's gonna be improved to a city-standard 24-foot fire lane
Okay.
From Morgan Street all the way to Bond's Ranch with a turnaround.
Okay.
Which is here.
Yeah, that's the only thing I had. And I guess you're not changing anything. He's already got access to his property that way.
Cool.
On the, on the 15-foot easement on the top part there that's in brown, the width of that, is that designed to be an access point to this property someday? Is that why it's got that little flag handle there?
Correct. We worked with Public Works to establish that 15-foot sewer easement for the future.
But the width of that easement, or the width of that track area, the property width there, is that wide enough for a road someday?
Yeah, that's 60 feet
Okay.
Right now, currently, and that was, I believe, to access that South Meadows.
Perfect. I gotta say, this is one of those easy ones.
I got a question for the applicant myself. You know, I know in storage building, you have to have the drainage on the roads. Does all of them dump into a sewer, storm sewer somewhere there real close, or is it?
So, the site sheet flows to the south, and there's a large text dot culvert system that runs under Morgan Street to Granbury Lake.
Uh-oh.
You've been there.
Whoops. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We've looked at it and analyzed it, and it handles the extra runoff from the site.
So, that's where it all go, it all flowed to that, so there won't be any additional?
Correct, sir.
Where abouts, where abouts is that on the map, Mayor, where he's talking about? Where drains to?
I don't know if it shows it on here. It goes under, it goes to 144, right, Scott? The storm sewer?
Pull the aerial up, I don't know if that's...
Correct. It's down at the corner of that second lot, the larger track, on the southeast corner, right down there.
And there's a drain, drain storage there?
There's, yes.
Storm sewer that goes across there and then dumps into the lake.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, washes out our ground or something.
Okay.
Council, any more questions for the applicant or Scott? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, did we close the public hearing? I think so. Make sure it's closed. We'll close the public hearing. Council, any more concerned or questions on this item? And we need to, we need to go ahead and do something with the conditions first, right, Scott?
Correct, Mayor.
So, Council, if there's no more question or concerns, I'll entertain a motion to approve the conditional approvals of the variances in the preliminary plat as stated.
So moved.
And I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Gorgon. Council, any questions or concerns? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next item, we'll go ahead and to entertain a motion to approve the said replat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner down there. Any more discussion, Council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved also. Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Mary Lysager to replat Lot 1, Block 4 of Abe's Landing. And once again, I'm gonna call on Scott to give us some detail on that, if you would please, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. What we have is a recorded lot of record that's at the far, let me get to a plat here, far northwestern boundary of Abe's Landing, somewhat adjoining the lake. It's currently zoned R7, single-family residential. You see the zoning district bounded in yellow. To the south of that is a planned development that allows for higher-density developments. There's a built facility to the south. Again, it's a single-family residential house. And what the applicant's proposing to do is take this one recorded lot of record and subdivide it into two. Now, one thing that we look at is to make sure that they're meeting the area requirements, the lot width, the lot depth. And if they do, then it becomes somewhat ministerial. You can see that the northernmost lot, again, this is R7, so it allows for no less than 7,000 square foot lots. The uppermost lot is 11,000 square feet, and the southernmost lot is 16,000 square feet. So, both lots, as subdivided, still far exceed that 7,000 square foot threshold. So, there's ample room on both lots to accommodate this replat. There is both water and sewer and a built facility so far as the street on the private roadway in front of the proposal. There are no variances associated with this replat application. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the plat as submitted.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Now, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any question for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said replat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Gorgon. Council, any more discussion on this item? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Texas EMS to replat. And I'm gonna turn this over to Scott also. Scott, could you give us some information on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. What's being proposed is to replat two lots of record into one, so we're decreasing density here. The property is already accommodating a built facility on-site to house Texas EMS. You can see currently the approximate location of the common property line currently. And what they're trying to do is roll that parking lot area into their recorded lot of record. This is in the Plaza East Edition, which was built quite some time ago. And as we've seen in the past with these Plaza East lots, they have substandard roadways and water lines and sewer lines. So, let me go back here. So, a particular nuance of this, as you can see, the Clifton Road in and of itself is outside the city limits. It's in the county, but the lot itself is in the city. Here's a, for presentation purposes, here's a remodeled presentation of the facility that we're looking at in order to accommodate some remodeling work. This is the replat itself, proposing to vacate that common lot line, again, rolling that parking lot into the revised replat application. We have, again, as we see with these Plaza East lots, we have a laundry list of variances. We have a variance 23946 regarding the size of the water line. This is in somebody else's CCN. It doesn't meet our 8-inch standards. It cannot accommodate fire hydrants or decreasing density. Therefore, your city engineers recommending approval because right now, they have two lots of record. So, they can, they can increase more water demand... So they can, they can increase more water demand on that water line, as opposed to the one building. So we're kind of tapering off the demand by, by rolling two lots into one. We have a variance request that was itemized as 3684 to not provide sidewalks. Uh, I asked my staff to take that off, because our subdivision ordinance requires sidewalks in the city. By the mere fact that the parkway and the road is in the county, the sidewalks here do not apply. So that should have been stricken from the laundry list of variances. We have a variance to 31E and 410 to not improve the streets to urban standard. Again, these are county-standard streets with bar ditches. We have a variance to 39A, fire protection regarding hydrants. Again, the lines that are out there are well below the eight-inch standard that we have. You can't hook a hydrant up to it. And we're decreasing density and demand here again. And then we have a final variance that was presented to P&amp;Z to not install streetlights. And I can tell you, in between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the, and the tonight's city council meeting, the applicant went to United Cooperative and had a streetlight installed. So that's off the table. And I think we have a picture of that glowing light here. Well done.
Good.
So, uh, so your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends, uh, what went through P&amp;Z is a conditional denial in order to leverage that, that neighborhood streetlight there. That conditional denial is no longer required. So with the streetlight being installed, we're recommending approval of the variances as presented and the replat as presented by the applicant.
So Scott, with that said, then we could go through with a motion for a replat with the said variances then, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. I mean, the public wished to speak on this item. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any questions or concerns on this item at this time? City Manager Chris Kaufman?
I'd like to mention for the record that this facility is, is just under 10,000 square feet. And under the fire code, it's required to have sprinkler system. And the Texas EMS is working with the guy that's selling that building to install tanks and, you know, the proper system to be able to meet the fire code. So they're able to tie onto a smaller water line to supply those tanks for the sprinkler system system. So they're working to accomplish that, so it will be in code that way. That is a concern throughout our community and in the ETJ, that, you know, these large buildings are required by the fire code to meet, you know, meet the fire code. And a lot of them, this property, they, they worked on it for quite some time before they committed to buy it. When I was on that board, we were looking at it then, so that's how long it's been. And, but they have negotiated a price to, you know, where they can afford it and meet the fire code. So, good news, it's, it's a good progress and good project.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel, any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the replat with the said variances.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is item number 10, which is a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance 18-15, approving and requesting the City of Granbury to amend ordinance 01-819. And I'm gonna start out here with having Scott give us the staff report on that one, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This particular item was driven by the rezoning request that we saw on Bridge Street, where the council directed city staff to come back with an ordinance amendment to allow for SUP considerations in kind of the downtown area specifically for units with common walls. So what we did was we cobbled together a zoning ordinance amendment, and we presented something to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And what we presented, what came out of the planning commission discussions was a little different. So, so bear with me, and I'll, I'll do my best to explain this as, as best I can. So your, your Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is itemized in yellow highlight on the top bar. And again, what precipitated this discussion was the allowance for unhosted BMBs in residential zones, and as they pertain to residential structures with common walls. This definition allows for short-term rentals, or what is defined in the zoning ordinance as bed and breakfast facilities, specifically unhosted residential, that allows for two guest suites in those, in those areas. The S denotes an SUP, it's not allowed by right, it's allowed under the issuance of an SUP permit by council. P is permitted by right, so if I'm in BC, for example, business commercial, then I don't have to go to council for, for a SUP, I can just operate in an hosted bed, breakfast facility by right. X is prohibited. So when city staff made their presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we kind of opened up the dialogue and said, well, we got these different zoning districts that are, that aren't allowed for the consideration of the SUP based on the previous SUP request, and they attempt to rezone to Central Business District based on our last discussions. The net result of that coming out of the Planning and Zoning Commission was that they issued SUPs in MD1, which is duplex patio home. Patio home is a single-family detached, in fact, it's a standalone, single-family structure, no common wall with, with a yard and townhome. Townhome could be a two-unit townhome, it could be a four, five, six-unit townhome, one structure with common, with common walls through. And then the other thing that the staff brought to light during the planning and zoning deliberations was you can open this up for those zoning districts, but really limit it to, or confine it to the historic districts, which is kind of where we were focusing. And I wanted to defer your attention to the map, if I may. This is a map of our two historic districts. The interior white one is the preservation overlay, the gray one on the outer rim is the compatibility overlay. So we do have regulations, not only in our zoning code, but in our code of ordinances, that defer certain types of uses within the historic districts. And you can define that as either singular or plural, most of the time, it's plural. So your Planning and Zoning Commission came forward with a recommendation to allow for SUPs to be applied in MD1 patio home and, and townhome, to include those in those districts. But they did not, we offered up the option to say, you can minimize that and focusing it on general downtown area where those districts were. Uh, but they chose not to do that. So what it did in effect was open it up to the entire city limit boundary. So for example, if I have a townhome over on Kalinko, or if I have a multifamily facility in, in Harbor Lakes, for example, then by their motion, they can have short-term rentals or BMBs on the, on a second floor at the Bromley, for example. That certainly wasn't, um, well, city staff kind of, again, we kind of pushed confining this to the historic overlays. So what came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission motion, what's being offered to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission, is to open it up citywide to MD1 patio home, townhome, and leave multifamily there. What's in green is what, generally what staff was trying to present to council. And, you know, we're partially at fault, maybe we didn't do a good job of representation at the Planning and Zoning Commission. But what we were looking at is to allow for those structures with attached units. MD1 patio home is not attached, but townhome, which is the one that we saw over on Bridge Street, to allow those with a specific use permit. And then we offered up a supplemental standard. That's the addition of F. If the bed and breakfast proposal is located in a single-family attached structure, that's MD1 and townhome, the site must be located within the historic overlays, HPO or HCO, that general area, it does not extend out to the greater city limits, like Fall Creek Highway, or maybe if there's attached, and there's attached units proposed in the new Saratoga Development, for example, or Harbor Lakes where we have attached units, it would not extend out there. Must be located in the overlays, and a letter of support from each adjoining property owner with a common wall shall be filed with the SUP application. So if I have a townhome, for example, and I have, I'm in the middle, and I have two neighbors next to me with a common wall, then the burden is on me to get supporting letters from those adjoining property owners. But it doesn't lock me out. It says, okay, if I'm not unable to get those adjoining property owners' letters, then it, then I'm required to get a three-quarter vote by both P&amp;Z and city council. Those property owners with that common wall, based on how this is structured, have the most tangible interest in the activity that goes on right beside their neighbor. So, those are the two scenarios that are being presented. That, again, the, what's being offered up by your Planning and Zoning Commission is highlighted in yellow, what's being offered up by staff, and what was presented insofar as having consideration of this historic overlay confines, and bringing those BMB-type activities to the central core of the downtown area, that historic overlay, where a lot of those are situated, that's ultimately what we're trying to get at. And possibly, again, I think it was a representation issue that we didn't, you know, you hate to overly press with your boards and commissions, but we, we did it, I thought, an admirable job of, of saying, could you look at this historic overlay dynamic? And they were, they were really not, they didn't give any reason, but they were really not receptive to it. So, Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should you have any. The other thing that I wanted to make mention of was, is we vetted the issue of allowing SUPs for structures with common walls against other cities. And we have that list here, we presented that to Planning and Zoning Commission as well. Surprisingly, the only city that doesn't allow it for townhomes was Grapevine, but all the other cities, aside from Southlake that had no regulation, allowed it under the similar SUP or conditional use permit that we currently are proposing by staff. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott, I think Chris has something he wants to add to, or ask about.
Thank you, Scott, for working on this. I know that I had some concerns, and could you, the MD1, refresh my memory, what that, is that a duplex?
It's duplex.
So, that's, that's a shared wall with just, is that four units?
Two.
Two?
So it's a structure with two units only, no more than two, with a property line down the common wall.
Okay. So what we've done is we, we've changed it, and staff supports, and I support what's in the green, the second option. And that's, that limits it to the historic overlay district
Right.
and the historic property district.
Only Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
But, and, and let's, let's be real about it, we, we realize there are areas of town where that's not conducive for bed and breakfast, that's just the way it is. It's unhoused and bed and breakfast.
If I may, I do want to make mention that in your standard, single-family residential detached, like R10, this does not preclude you from being outside of that historic overlay and having a BMB. It's just those structures with attached walls where this supplemental standard F kicks in.
Is that clear as mud?
And then they, on, on their SUP, though, they still have to get the letters from the
Yes.
adjoining.
If they, if they're in the historic overlay and they have an attached wall.
Okay.
And if they're not in the historic?
They can't do it then?
They can't do it.
Right. I mean, if that's where we go.
Right, if you adopt what's in green, option two.
Or structures with attached walls.
We're gonna call it option two. Okay, very good.
Scott, you, oh, Mayor, I want to ask him a question.
Councilman Allen.
It's not in here, but back on the, probably the second, third page, you got bed and breakfast unhosed it. And then you come down to B, and it says food service. That's not in there, right?
No.
Okay.
No, that, all this ordinance amendment is focusing on is the unhoused bed and breakfast residential, and again, no more than two suites.
Yeah.
Okay, Scott, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing, if anybody in the public wishes to speak on this item, these changes. If nobody wants to speak, I'll close that public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more questions or concerns on this item? I'm gonna be looking for a really defined motion here, counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to go ahead and recommend approval and make a motion to be approved based on the staff's recommendation of applying only to the historical overlay.
Okay. So we have a motion, so this would be option two, we have a motion to approve this based on the staff with being located only within the historic overlay.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Cook, could you come to the speaker, the microphone? I don't, I don't know that this issue has made it to your desk yet, but where we're dealing with townhomes that are being made in, a, a, a house being made into a townhome, where it's multifamily, there's two, there's two units adjacent to each other, does the fire code require anything special for that?
Two-hour firewall between the.
Two-hour firewall, okay.
Two hours.
Okay. So we don't know if that's built that way or not, we'll have to inspect it, right?
No, sir.
Okay, so that's the next step for him to go through. Thank you.
So he's zoned townhome.
Okay, so he's probably got a two-hour wall, but we'll see.
Yeah.
But we don't know, we'll.
If you don't know, in other words, you can't permit him, is what you're saying?
Well, they'll find out when.
Oh, you'll find out during the.
But it, I mean, in the motion, did it say it had to have a two-hour?
This was just a change, this, but that was just to change our ordinance.
We're just, this ordinance just allows that to be there.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure there's nothing egregious in the fire code, that we just pass the zoning ordinance to allow to happen, that is impossible to happen.
Yeah, but, but if it's built, say, a year ago.
But it's a new use, and it takes a little.
It's new, it's different.
I agree.
Okay.
Don't get me confused, Chris. Oh, man, I was just thinking about Mr. Wade and his process, so.
That's the next item.
I'll see you later.
Thank you, counsel. We're gonna move to the next item, item number 11, which is a public hearing, consider adoption ordinance 1816, approving and request of Mr. Glenn Wade. I'm gonna ask Scott to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subject property is highlighted in kind of a light brown color, denoted with a TH for townhome. What's being requested by the applicant is to allow for a specific use permit consideration on the southernmost dwelling unit, just to the south of the red line, for a residential unhoused bed and breakfast. It's part of the application that states that this is for one guest suite, four bedrooms will be available, but this will be under one lease contract for one suite, the four bedrooms available. So based on the recent change to the preceding zoning ordinance amendment, a SUP is not now allowed to be considered in townhome. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP issuance for this property unanimously. There's a site plan showing generally where that property line goes through the common wall between the southern and northern units. The parking meets the supplemental standards, and your P&amp;Z recommendation.
They have some conditions there, right Scott?
Yes, sir. So parking shall be installed, striped, and inspected prior to any BMB activity. Supplemental standards 1 and 18 shall be required, that's inclusive of a wired smoke alarm, that's part of the zoning ordinance, and then the term for one year are the three conditions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, anybody in the public wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any concerned questions for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with the said conditions.
Some move.
I have a motion, Councilman Corget.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on that item? Councilman Couch?
Scott, I just want to thank staff for working this out. I know Mr. Wade worked hard on this and he did a great job.
Counsel, any more questions, concerns? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item, item number 12, is a public hearing considering executing an FIA number 18-01. I'm going to call upon Scott to give us a staff report on that one. I think Chris is going to talk a little bit on this. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. What's being presented by the applicant tonight is a facilities improvement agreement to allow for the construction of off-site utility lines, that being more specifically the water line that's denoted in blue and the sewer line that's denoted in that orange color. To give you some perspective of where we are, the, where it says to the upper left-hand corner, that's the Racetrack gas station and then Highway 4 that goes into Acton is paralleling the top of the screen. This is the development that we saw some time ago that is proposing cottages, the really nice cottages that will have that lap siding on the backside. And part of Phase 1 is also the, a commercial lot that's located here. Again, the cottages are located here in the back. That plan showed this portion being Phase 1, and this proposal of the FIA is to bring the infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure to this, and then they'll come back with a FIA at a later date for the internal water and sewer lines to support this proposed development internal to the site. So, the FIA is for roughly $183,000. That's inclusive of both the water and sewer lines. There's some particular nuances regarding that. The existing water line here was upsized when Racetrack was platted and developed. The city council at that time chose to upside that, upsize that line because they thought there would be growth potential along Highway 4. As a part of that upsizing and consideration with this development, the developer and his engineer offered the ability to, to upsize the line and continue it along Highway 4. So, as a part of that upsizing cost beyond the required eight inch to support the development, that's rolled into the FIA. There's a request to itemize and approve $29,000, a little over $29,000 for the cost to city to upsize that as this water line is extended to the furthest extent of the developed property. This is the buildout property right now. They'll probably come in and focus on Phase 1, but again, that $29,000 is part of your agenda packet and that's the cost to upsize it. This is the engineer's estimate of probable cost that's itemized. Again, cost participation, you can see 29, 392, that's kind of in the middle section for city participation costs, that's part of the FIA agreement as well. As a part of this application, there are needed easements. Go back to the sewer line, and these two easements are for this particular area of the sewer line. One goes through here, off-site, and the other easement allows for the continuation through the property, which is the rightmost agreement, easement screenshot that you can see here to the extent of the furthest boundary of the proposed development. So, that's, that's basically the FIA. I can tell you, they provided a letter, irrevocable letter of credit to secure it to the tune of the cost. They're requesting that the city authorize the expenditure of the 29, 392 to upsize. Again, that's a council decision ultimately. There's three parts to this particular item. Authorize the expenditure of the 29, 392 to upsize that water line along Highway 4. There's the consideration of the easements. I can tell you, with respect to the submitted engineering plans, we have three departments reviewing that. Our city engineer, Public Works Department, and our inspections department all review the plans and proposed locations of the lines. They have no further comment on this. And then finally, we have the execution of the FIA for the off-site facilities as presented by the developer.
And we can, we can roll all those in together?
Yes, sir. As a, one more side comment, I think it's in your staff report, the 29, 392 was identified in the water impact fund account, so that's where those funds are coming from. Thank you, Mayor.
I might just add that if you approve number one there, that we'll put that in a budget amendment on the consent agenda at the next meeting to take those funds from the impact funds, to authorize those expenditures. And then what we'll do is as they, as they put in the infrastructure and it's inspected, we will pay that out. So, this is an option, this 12-inch line, all that he's required to put in is eight inch, and we, we would like to maintain that 12-inch size as it continues to grow down Highway 4. And that's in accordance with our city code that has been adopted forever.
How many, how many houses would it take, Chris, to pay back the 29 on Impact B?
You know, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but that's how that Impact B is accumulated, is citywide when people put in water taps, we put money into that Impact B kitty and it is used to upsize and for the growth and things like that.
I'm not against it, but I can't even remember if you ever do it for developers or...
Well, we did it here on this racetrack.
That's from my time, probably.
Okay.
Always was not.
They were building it when I got here.
Okay. The racetrack on 144?
You was here.
On 144, they did.
377, so 377.
I thought it hurt, Bill, I'm sorry, Chris.
Anyway, it's, it's normal for us to do that, and it's a policy that, that it gets the developer to put in what he needs, and then we upsize it to do what we need.
And it's our pipe.
It's our pipe, you bet. And that's, you know, that's the tough part for developers to have to put in all that infrastructure to meet their needs.
I've got the problem in Johnson County, and they don't pay for nothing.
See, we also have a pro-rata formula. If he was further away than 2,000 feet, then our policy would allow us to create a fund where when somebody added on to that pipe, they would pay their pro-rata share. But according to our ordinance, they're, they're too close to be able to qualify for that reimbursement, so... And I would like to ask a question on record, if, when you open the public hearing, I'll do that.
Okay. Well, I'm fixing to open up the public hearing. At this time, I open the public hearings, anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Mr. Kaufman?
You bet. Mr. Baird, I need to direct this to you, and I'm doing this for historical purposes. There's an easement that we're, would you scroll over to that, the blue easement or the dark colored one? That easement that you're giving us and that, or that Mr. Bates is giving us for that future development of that sewer line, is within the footprint of the United, or the Brazos Electric Co-op. And there's been an email that flowed back and forth that said that's okay. I, I have two questions. Number one, explain how you can have two easements in one area to two different entities? And then number two, is it, is it impossible to move that 15-foot easement outside and a parallel to the Brazos easement?
Well, there was a lot of discussion...
Go ahead and introduce yourself before the record here, Mr. Baird, if you would, please.
Pardon me. I'm Bill Baird with Baird, Hampton and Brown. There was a lot of discussion with the Brazos Electric Co-op people in Waco in particular. I was talking to an individual named Don McElvein, and when this started out, I assumed that we would have to get an easement from the Brazos Electric Co-op to locate, first of all, this is a 60-foot wide electric easement with an overhead power line in it that heads north to their substation, not too far from our site here. So I coordinated with them, I sent them all our drawings, and we, we had numerous conversations back and forth, and he said, well, he said, I can't give you an easement because we're not the landowner. We simply have an electric easement for our utility here. Our land plan, because our, our density is, we're doing all one-story cottages, and our density is relatively low for a project like this, we, we really need for the sewer line to be within the 60-foot electric easement strip. So, Mr. McElvein told me that, used to, I said, well, if you can't give me an easement, do you want a joint use agreement so that we can build a city of Granbury sanitary sewer within this 60-foot wide strip? He said, we used to do that, but our lawyers told me, told us that it wasn't valid, so we don't do that anymore. All we request is that you coordinate with us, you tell us what you want to do, and that you notify us before you begin construction. He said, the underlying landowner, who in this case is Mr. Bates, is the one who would then grant a sanitary sewer easement to the city of Granbury for this public sanitary sewer. So we, we did a lot of due diligence with the Brazos Electric Co-op. It didn't exactly turn out the way I thought it was going to, but they basically acquiesced and said, if you want to build a sewer line here, it's okay with us. So, any other questions?
But they didn't have to say so, right? I mean...
They didn't have to say so, that's the bottom line, Mayor. Yeah.
So they're able to, we're able to receive an easement that's already got an easement from somebody else? No problem?
You want a lot of conflict?
If you want a lot of conflict? Okay, my next question was, is can we move it over 15 feet and put it on the property?
Scott, can you go back to one of your screens that shows our site plan? It'd be very difficult, Mr. Kaufman, to do that. I have provided, I don't know that it's on here, Scott, but I, I've provided, when we did the preliminary plat, a utility master plan for the whole development that showed where all the utilities are going to be, and from our site plan, it just really works for us and only works for us to put this sanitary sewer just inside the south line of the electric easement. We, we're willing to build a, an eight inch sanitary sewer, provide an easement to the city of Granbury, then we'll have three or four other lines that head back upstream towards FM4 to serve us and also to serve undeveloped property on the other side of FM4. So it, it really doesn't work for us from a site plan perspective to shift this further, 15 feet further into the property.
It's a 60-foot easement for the electric company, and they're proposing to take the far, the far east of it, of their existing easement, to carve off 15 foot for us. And I just don't know how that works, so... I've never heard of that before.
Can, can we get it in writing? They said it's okay to do it?
That's why I got him here, that video got him.
I mean, I don't see a problem, but the other, other side of the coin is, it would be a problem if we don't get it.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, we'll get the easement, but the question, the easement document is in this agenda packet to be considered and accepted tonight, so, and authorize the mayor to sign it. So if you accept the easement, they're going to issue the easement. And, and my question is, is that what we want to do for this development? And it's come a long way, baby, to get to this point, and this is the finish line, and for that to be the sticking point isn't very good, but I ran into it and I asked questions, and that's why we're talking now, so...
May I, may I make just a couple of other comments? We, we went through this many times with the Brazos Electric people, and they, they said it's okay with them if we build a sewer line here.
Are we going to be able to tie on to the west side and go, and traverse across their easement to put in sanitary sewer to serve those lots to the, to the west?
Was that the next phase?
Are you talking about on McKiddrick?
I'm talking about future development over there.
Okay, okay.
I'm talking about this area right here.
Cross the road, cross the...
That area there. These lots are going to be sewers someday.
No, they, well, okay, we're, we're connecting to the existing sanitary sewer in Clifton. We're running a public sanitary sewer down, I think it's McKiddrick, isn't that the name of the street, Scott?
Stembridge.
Stembridge, sorry, Stembridge. In front of two existing lots there, and then we're turning back to the east to come into the northwest corner of Cardinal Woods. So, everything that's adjacent to the gravity portion can connect to it. It also could be extended further down Stembridge to the south. That's not in the city limits, but it's a gravity sewer. Anybody who has a wherewithal to connect on to it could, as long as they coordinate with the city of Granbury.
As long as they extend it to our standard, you bet.
We are.
Yeah, on, on your part, you're, you're right, but on further down Stembridge, so that's, that's, that's an option. So, so basically, he's taking, this is a, an efficient way to get sewer to that property. And it also is close enough that we're not having to co-pay our pro-rata share or anything like that to get the sewer to that property, so it's a good, it's a good option. It's just that 15-foot easement running parallel inside the Brazos is my point of contention, and I want everybody to be aware of it, and I'd like for our attorney, if he's got any comments or concerns, to voice those for us, and at least we got them on record and we...
All that old shit, huh? Yeah, that's right. My only issue is with, ultimately, you're granting us an easement, but do you actually have the authority to grant it? That's, that's what the issue is, and my recommendation would be to table this until the next meeting, and we have a sit-down with Brazos and everyone get on board, and we execute documents necessary to move forward with this.
Well, we do have an email string from Brazos saying this is okay.
Yeah, I'd like something a little more formal.
Okay.
Brazos told me that they are not going to offer up any agreement or joint use agreement or whatever.
Well, there's a reason for that, and that's what we need to consider.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just going to give us their word. They'll do it, and 10 years later, somebody comes in and says, nobody didn't authorize that.
If you need to move, if, if they need to move their power lines and their 60-foot easement and our pipe is in the way, they're going to say, you know what, our easement, Trump's your easement, you need to move your pipe.
That's the concern.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've come a long way, I hate to...
I don't know if it's to a point where I would say just deny it, but maybe table it and let's have a...
Is it a conditional deny? Can we prove it that way?
No, no, it seems reasonable that we can just table it or continue it until the 20th and try to work with Bill and reach out with Public Works to Brazos and get the attorney involved and so far as correspondence to kind of help things along, possibly.
Bill has a question.
Yeah, I, I have a question, really, and I'm not a lawyer, so I, I can't give you any opinion on this, but what do you want Brazos to provide to the city?
Well, I, I don't know that it's a question of what do we want them to provide, I think it's a question that we need to sit down with their lawyers and ultimately make a determination that's not going to put the city in any type of a position of liability down the road.
Will you do that, or will that be mission based?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
We will. We'll, we'll ask that you facilitate the meeting, but we will, we will all come together and...
I will do that.
See what we can work out.
I will do that.
Counsel, any more discussion? Once again, I don't know if I close the public hearing, but we'll close the public hearing this time. Counsel, any more discussion on that? Do we have a motion? Scott, bring that back up to the recommendation page, if you would, please.
Oh, let me go to the heading.
That's all right, that's all right. So counsel, what I'm hearing, it sounds like we possible table into this, if somebody wants to make a motion to table this to a future date of the next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table FIA 1801 until the 20th, so we can get this further research.
So we have a motion to table this till the 20th?
Second.
And we have a second, Councilman Couch? Any more discussion on this, counsel? All in favor of tabling this item? All in favor of tabling this item? I do too. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will be tabled till the next council meeting. Chris said, "We hate to do that," but we need to get some clarification, and hopefully you can get that for us. Our next item is to receive a final funding, is it the right one? Yeah. Is to receive a final funding summary for the 2015 lift station number four. And I'm gonna start this off with Mr. Chris Kaufman. He's got a staff, I think, that's gonna talk about it.
You bet. Um, as Ava comes to the lectern there, I'd like to introduce the, just remind everybody about this project that happened at Brookshire's Mother's Day of 2015, uh, where we had extreme rain, and, uh, praise God, we filled up the lake, and, uh, we, we, we lost a, a very expensive lift station, and, uh, it was important that we continue on, and I, you know, we have a great city team, and they rallied together and worked around the clock to provide excellent service. I don't believe any, uh, business or, uh, residents was closed because of lack of sanitary sewer, because of the manual override that our team put in place. And, uh, Ava's gonna give you a little financial history on this, but I want to say that, um, what's not listed on, in your staff report is, is the negotiations that took place between staff and TechDOT to get them to apply for emergency funds from the Federal Highway Administration to pay for the reconstruction of that drainage structure underneath that parking lot. Uh, at one time, that was a valley through there, and before they built the lake, uh, history, as we dug into this, we found out that used to be the city landfill, and, and they burned everything, and, and, uh, as, as they were talking about building the lake, uh, the landowner ended up putting in a seven-foot culvert in the bottom of that, in the bottom of that, what used to be a little valley of between two hills. And he got a bulldozer and leveled all that and covered up that pipe, and that was in 1961. And nobody knew it was there, and, uh, but it was being used for drainage for all of that park to the west of 144, over into the Meadows subdivision, Mr. Meadows. And, uh, TechDOT tied their drainage system onto that culvert in 2001. And because of that action in 2001, I believe we had a little negotiating power to be able to get TechDOT to seek some funds, but the replacement of that pipe was somewhere in the neighborhood, three and a half to four million dollars. And, uh, the city was, was in terrible position of exposure to have to fix that, and I'm really proud that we were successful in that. You know, we, we rallied together as a city council, y'all did your job, declared an emergency, uh, we took care of things. And now I want to tell you the rest of the story, that internally, what staff did for the last two years to get us where we're at. So, take, take off there, Ava.
Thank you, city manager, counsel, mayor. Um, I, I wanted to start with showing you some of the pictures from the drainage washout, and, um, take this opportunity to, to talk about, a little bit about what had happened. I have jotted down some of the timeline, and as, uh, Mr. Kaufman noted, it took us over two years to get to this point. And, um, again, I'm not here to speak to you about how to repair or replace a lift station, but I would like to share our experience working with both our insurance company and FEMA, um, during this project. As you know, after the disaster was declared, our first responders, our police officers, our public works crew, uh, were working 24/7, as, uh, Mr. Kaufman stated, to ensure that the site was secured, that, um, they worked the manholes, because the sewer system was down on the large part of 144. And of course, and the disaster caused an enormous burden on the city. Um, right away, the estimates were very close to a million dollars to replace the lift station, to secure the site, to put back the infrastructure that, um, we needed to get everything back as it was. And this, this, this is a huge, uh, financial impact on the city, but because we had, um, funds, uh, reserve funds in place, we were able to respond and, uh, pay the necessary expenses as they came up. We right away reached out to TML, our insurance company, and after the disaster declaration, FEMA and Texas Department of Emergency Management was on the site as well. While the lift station was insured, and it was listed on our property insurance schedule, the insured value was not even close to the estimate we were receiving for the replacement cost. We had TML's attention right away, but it took, um, our city manager and our mayor to reach out to our insurance company, to fully receive their attention, and finally I received the necessary funding consideration. We had numerous meetings with TML representatives, representatives, and FEMA representatives to ensure that, that we followed their requirements, to collect the data, to log the data, to track it, and to submit them the information that they needed, to make sure that we qualified for the reimbursement. I cannot stress enough to tell you that the teamwork and collaboration that happened between, um, our departments was essential, and that's what really assisted us to recover the funds, uh, for the project. While our staff had limited experience dealing with disasters, and this time I'm talking about, uh, my staff and myself, I know Chris had, uh, experience with disasters, but we have not, and we never dealt with FEMA before. So, now I know when people ask me, "Have you ever dealt with FEMA?", now I know why. That, that is just itself a different subject. But, um, the record-keeping was so important, and no matter how many times we asked them, "What do you want us to track? How do you want us to track it?", the answer, answer was a little bit different each time. TML wanted us to track it in a different manner, FEMA wanted to track it in a different manner. They wanted us to categorize the expenditures, uh, differently again. We worked really hard with staff to ensure that we had it in the format they wanted it. I wanted to mention here that, um, a couple employees, I mean, we had everyone, so I, I should be able to name all the employees by name who worked on this project, but I wanted to, um, uh, mention Julie Boyd, she's the administrative assistant at the service center. She helped us collect the data, she's the one who was in touch with, um, all the employees who were out in the field, they came to her, turning their time, uh, the equipment they used, she logged it for us, and then it was sent over to my department. And in my department, it was, um, especially Elizabeth Bailey and Mrs. Shaw, who was, um, logging, um, these expenses, reconciling the spreadsheets, and ensuring that all the FEMA worksheets were filled out exactly, um, as they wanted it. Again, if you would see these FEMA worksheets, um, they're, they were very extensive, to say the least. We relied heavily on department heads, managers, supervisors, to keep us posted, to keep the data flowing to us, so we could have a fast turnaround and submit all the information to both insurance company and FEMA. Again, all this would not have been possible without the collaboration of every department and their willingness to track and share the data. Um, we relentlessly were working to ensure whatever requirement these two companies threw on us were met. I can assure you that these requirements changed the further we got into the project. We logged, uh, all the detailed invoices, proof of payments, uh, logged overtime for each employee, tracked equipment by use, type, serial number, location, hour, and operator. Everything had to match, everything had to link, and everything had to reconcile. Um, and another thing I wanted to mention, that we worked with several different, um, field representatives with FEMA, because there are many times they were relocated to a different state or a different, um, project, and it felt like we were starting all over again when the new representatives arrived. And I also wanted to stress that, um, we relied heavily on inprotectives and tots. Their, um, expertise and support was very valuable during this time, because all these project worksheets had to be written, um, to the point that they were close-out ready, and they required a lot of, uh, engineering detail as well. We were able to reach out to them, and they were always there and sending us the information we needed. Um, I have a couple more pictures. This, this is another picture from the site, and at this time, I wanted to, uh, show you, oh, yeah, there is one more picture that we have, we were able to take, um, as we were partnering up with.
You got the one picture of Chris leaning against a guardrail.
Is he leaning?
I was taking a break.
Yeah.
So, as you can see, the emergency, FEMA, uh, Texas Department of Emergency was there. Um, I mean, right away, we definitely had the attention of everyone. And on this worksheet, you are able to see that, um, the total expenditures on the top box ended up to be over a million, $365,000. I have it, uh, broken down into categories that I cannot see from here. And, um, and also, right underneath, I am showing, um, what we were able to recover from the insurance company. TML proceeds were just right, right under a million dollars. I have to say that TML cut their first check in June, uh, 2015, just a month after the disaster, in an amount of $100,000, just to give us some kind of relief. And they, um, turned around really fast, and November 2015, we received, um, one of the largest, uh, checks from them, over 556,000. And their payment schedule was finalized in June 2016, when we received their final check in the amount of $42,000, when we were able to finish the, um, port, the surface around the lift station. On the other hand, um, the FEMA project worksheets were finalized in October and November of 2015. At this time, they were submitted for, um, payment and audit, but because they were qualified as a large project, it took all the way to June 2016 before they started testing these projects. They assigned an auditor representing the state, um, Kessler Manning, who we had an opportunity to work with over two years. Um, we got to know each other really well. She, she was definitely very instrumental with the project as well. She was very, very helpful. Uh, when she started her audit process, we had to, again, uh, start submitting additional information they requested, time cards, um, payroll records, additional expenses, so we almost like went through the process one more time. And then in September 2016, we, um, incur, uh, we, we, uh, ran into our first major delay. Uh, so we are now in September 2016. That's when FEMA determined that the insurance reimbursement wasn't applied exactly the same way as they estimated it would be. So, the entire project worksheets were sent back to FEMA for reapplication. This took over three months before we even received the response. Uh, we kept checking on, on, on this, but, um, it was almost like it was left on somebody's desk, and it took a while before she, uh, she or he was able to work on that project again. So, December 2016, we filed an extension, we had to file this time an extension for the project. And, um, uh, many times, I was gonna say, I even shared this with Kessler, it feels like FEMA is trying to make us quit, make it so hard that we would just stop asking for the payment. Um, March 2017, I received word from, uh, Kessler Manning from the state, um, that we should be receiving our close-out letter. At this time, we received our first payment from FEMA in the amount of $211,000. Um, then in May 2017, I received an, um, update from Kessler that FEMA is wanting to review our project worksheet one more time, because they feel like they overpaid us. At this time, um, as you know, in July and August, Harvey and Maria happened, uh, so FEMA really did not pay very much attention to us, as they had to respond to other hurricane victims. And it took enormous amount of time and effort to set up some meeting or conference call with them, and we were able to get some of the, um, representatives higher up in the organization on a phone call with Kessler's help. And as we were discussing the project and going detail by detail through why they think, uh, that they overpaid us, it was realized that one of their representatives just made a mistake and applied the numbers incorrectly. So, at that time, um, we finally received our, uh, payment of $92,947 in, uh, December 2017. So, truly, we just, uh, finished the project. It's still not closed-out, closed, closed-out. We still have to, uh, sign some final paperwork, but, um, the full funding had been received, and that, how you can see that, um, the unreversed expense at this point is only $52,000 out of almost $1.4 million. And I do have a picture, um, of the lift station, of the project as, as it was going on, and, um, uh, the, uh, water lines that were put in. And if I'm speaking out of terms or not naming something right, just tell me, but, um.
Pictures don't lie.
These are, these are some of the worksheets, uh, that we worked on. We tried to take a Snapchat, I mean, a, uh, snap of these, um, worksheets that we were working on, uh, to let you see that as well. And then I have, uh, a picture of the final lift station as well.
You know, thank you, Ava, and what Ava failed to mention is, uh, she was the bulldog behind the administrative, uh, work with FEMA. I know for a fact that the proj, the project was audited five times, and, and before we got to the point where they were ready to write the check, and Ava represented us well through that whole process. Thank you, Ava, appreciate you. Lesson learned out of this, uh, let me just finish with this, uh, the lesson learned is, we had so much trouble with our insurance, which is Texas Municipal League, uh, intergovernmental risk pool, which means we're in a pool of member cities, and we pay premiums, and we're kind of self-insured through this organization. Uh, that lift station was insured for $20,000 with replacement cost coverage, and you can see it cost a million dollars.
Yes.
And so what we've done, and TML has done, uh, we've gone through and, and reevaluated all those values that were assigned probably decades ago to different pieces of equipment, and tried to put a realistic number on it to, to be listed in our, in our coverage documents. And then TML has, has come up with a new policy that they will only pay 150% of the, of the covered value on anything going forward in the future. So, we probably saved them millions of dollars by having this episode, 'cause now then the hurricane down south, there are probably people with all kinds of problems, uh, that are underinsured, but, uh, we, you know, the mayor and I coordinated the, uh, executive director at TML, and, uh, they assured us they would come see us, and they, they were there three days later after the TML conference. So, we had a, what I call a come-to-Jesus meeting, and, and, uh, they, they, they saw the light, so to speak. It was, it was good. But we, we, we were severely underinsured, but they did step up. As our insurance, uh, we're self-insured, and as a pool, they took care of business, and we're really proud of them, and, uh, we'll continue to do business with them because they took such good care of us, so.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. That, I think Chris had been on the job two days when it happened, is that correct?
Well, that's my first weekend, that's for sure.
First weekend, and, uh, we get the call early in the morning, and pouring down raining, and, uh, I get out there, and there's probably eight, nine city employees working, and first off, thank Chris and all the employees, every one of them. They were there, and I had many, many of the city employees that didn't know Chris yet, 'cause he just got on the job. He drove from Austin, I think, down there, and we had to have a special meeting, so, uh, Mr. Parsons was mayor, approached him, the mayor was out of town. We called it and had it underneath Brookshire. And, uh, but anyway, uh, Chris got. Brookshire. And, but anyway, Chris got there and they started doing sandbags, trying to keep the water out of it. And I think Chris from care of two, everybody else is one. And I have employees says, boy, he's gonna make a good city manager. So thank you, Chris, for a great job.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would also like to commend our staff. I've got several clients that live in the neighborhood that is serviced by that sewer line and not anybody lost service. And I know the guys were there twenty-four seven. As a, as a citizen, I know we're all real quick to jump on staff when the lights don't come on, the toilets don't flush the right way, and the water doesn't work. And we never thank them when those things do work. So just keep that in mind. These guys really break their backs to, to keep these things going for us. And sometimes it's, they cannot prevent things from going wrong, but we try to stay ahead of it. So thanks to all the staff. I know when I came on the council, this was a huge concern because at that point, we were looking at three million dollars. And thank you, Ava, and your staff. And we will refer you to you as the bulldog going forward, I guess.
All right. Thank you very much. I would, I would hate to be a, I'd hate to be an auditor at Ava's house for the IRS because
Amen.
She'd have more information than they want to read. Very good, though. Very good. Thank you very much.
No motion.
Our next, there's no action to take on item number thirteen. So our next item is to consider approving a funding for a proposal building improvement project for the downtown public restroom. And I'm gonna call upon our city manager, Chris Cofflin, along with a staff member.
Y'all previously directed us to look into doing some improvements. And we did. We, we've kind of looked at it every way you can and got all kinds, different kinds of pricing here. But Aaron put together a, a report and I'll let him go over that and then we can talk further on other issues.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. This is kind of broke down into two different projects. One of them was a later addition to your packet, I believe. So I'll start with the first one. And at the end of that, if you have any questions, we can, we can talk about that section. So like Mr. Cofflin said, this is for some improvements to the interior of the public restrooms behind the opera house. And there's old epoxy floor paint on that floor at this time. I believe y'all got some pictures in your packet also. So to remove all the existing stall walls, to sand that epoxy off. And they've got it detailed out in the quote that they would start with a coarse paper and then of course move down to a finer paper, and then stain and seal those floors, and then reinstall the, the walls of the, around that stalls. And that price would be thirteen thousand eight eighty-one twenty-nine. And that work will be performed by a contractor. There's some other options here for lighting improvements, for, to remove the existing fluorescent light fixtures and to replace with LED light fixtures. And that cost would be fifteen hundred dollars and that work would be performed by city staff. There's also a picture of some lighting. It's that center structure, those lighting, the existing lighting is one foot by four foot. And that new LED lighting is the same size. Over the years, some of the faucets, you know, as faucets go bad, they would replace the faucets. So all the faucets at the, at the sinks, they really aren't consistent in style and design. So there's a couple of options there. I believe there's two that are motion activated, battery powered motion activated, and the, the others are manual. So to, to go with all new motion activated faucets, that cost would be fifteen hundred dollars and that work would be performed by city staff. Or to go with all manual faucets, that would be two hundred and fifty dollars and that work also performed by city staff. So those, the difference in numbers at the bottom down there correlate to choices made on, on faucets. So the other numbers that we received were to go in and tile the walls and the floors of those restrooms. And of course, if no one's been in those restrooms, the interior walls are your native Granberry stone. So it's a rough face wall. So you would have to form up vertical to attach the tile to. So there's pricing, pricing breakdown for that. So to, there'd also be some interior demolition. If you're gonna be changing the actual interior dimensions of those rooms. So you've got existing plumbing stub outs, existing divider wall spacing. So there's interior dimension demolition, replacing plumbing rough ends, new metal studs and cement board substrate walls. That is going in and putting new walls to attach the tile to. So new tile floors, new tile walls, new toilet partitions at the water closets, reinstall plumbing and toilet partitions, and no electrical or lighting. That grand total of that cost would be one forty-eight, four twenty-nine, seventy-six. Now, these are some rough numbers. This is from an architectural firm gave us these numbers. And these numbers were given to us by giving them some drawings with dimensions and lots of photos of the restroom facilities. And this is the, the numbers they had come up with. Any, any questions on either one of these items or?
Thank you, Aaron. Well, there you have it, Council, that, of the request. I know there's gonna be some questions asked on this. So I'll open it up to the panel here for questions for Aaron or Chris or anybody else.
I'd like to say that there's a lot of assumptions on that sheet. Architect took the measurements on Friday that we sent him. And that's why this was added to your agenda packet on Monday. But at, at the request, we, we needed to get some more estimates. And so as Aaron said, those walls are brick. And what this is, is putting out metal studs with concrete type board on that metal stud to hang the tile on. And so that's pretty expensive. But, you know, there's, there's other options. This is the worst case scenario and we could probably do some more research and come back with some other options. But I know that, I talked with Councilmember Couch, he's, he's got some input probably as well to that, to add on this issue. But the bottom line is, those restrooms were built in the early nineties. Aaron told me that we redid that floor about five years ago.
That's correct.
And so the maintenance on that epoxy needs to be done probably a little more often than ever five years if you go back with epoxy. But anyway, that's kind of where we're at. We put together a simplistic approach to replace the faucets, redo the floor, and came up with that and, and thought we were stretching our budget there. So that's kind of where we're at.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Hey, Aaron. So part of that quote was, was new stalls?
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand.
How much? Fifteen thousand new.
And four thousand for the installed toilets. Okay. Pre-installing partitions.
And this does not address anything ADA related. Whenever we were looking at those, those stalls, the handicap stall is required to have a five-foot width and you're gonna have a, a turning radius in there for a wheelchair. And my concern is, and I didn't have tape measure, but we'd need further research on that. But if you fur that wall out, you're gonna make that wall closer to the toilet. And I don't know about the required distance between the wall and the toilet to be ADA compliant. And so we may have a, an impasse there as not being able to put tile there, but we'll need to research that further. And it moves the partitions a little bit when you do that.
Mayor.
Councilman, Council?
Well, you know, I, I certainly couldn't go along with justifying this kind of expense. I've gotten close. There's so much less than this. But I think if, if it's going to be a maintenance issue, that council shouldn't be really involved in that. Leave it up to staff. If we actually talk about a capital improvement, which would include tile, I think there might be some options from maybe donations that may, maybe could offset some of that cost. But
I got a que, I got a question. Why, why would we want tile? I mean, it's got stone walls in there. I mean, they're nice walls. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious what, why would you want, you know, something that you'd see inside of a house, I guess? Because these, these are public restrooms outside. I agree that we want to make sure that they're, they're nice and clean and painted and, and all that good stuff. But to take the next step and, and move up the tile and the, the additional, well, the lighting would be energy efficient, I guess. But some of that stuff there, just it doesn't look like that's where the direction the council was wanting to go to start with. But now we, we, I'm gonna use Tony, Tony Allen's phrase, we're gonna build a Taj Mahal here.
Yeah.
What's the matter?
Councilman Mobley.
So to put another turn in this story, I talked to a local group that really doesn't get enough recognition for what they do around this community. But it's the Lake Granberry Area Beautification Council. They do the jewel ball. They're always looking for ways to contribute to our community. And they do things within the city. And I've approached members of their board. They had a board meeting today. And they would, they would love to help us with this. So I would like for us not to take action on this item tonight so that we can move forward with discussions on those. I can assure you that the hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is probably not coming our way from that group. But I can also assure you that this council person would sure have a hard time justifying that expense as well.
Yeah, I agree.
I would like, just like the opportunity to continue those discussions and, and see what we can do so it wouldn't cost the taxpayers a penny.
That's a
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Reiner.
I always come from the idea that we need to work on safety issues. And I'm looking this over. If you have ever been in a building where there are stained concrete floors and there's a drop of water and you hit that water, you're pretty much on the floor. And I'm concerned with the elderly that go in there and, and it's, I think it would be a huge liability. I think we need to readdress the idea of the stained concrete and stick with the epoxy with the, with the better texture so people can stick with that. And then with regard to the rock on the inside, I actually went over there this morning because I haven't been in there in a long time. And I just wanted to take a look at it, get my own assessment. And it looks like the rest of the square. And I would, I would disagree with doing anything to the walls because right now you can walk in with a power washer and take care of it and not have to worry about grout and tile and, and things like that. Tile can easily be damaged if we happen to have a vandal that decides to, you know, to take, yeah, take some, take a, some action in there. But just some of those things that we probably need to address, even if we don't address this entirely tonight.
Very good. I, I like Mr. Mobley there. And he's reached out to those. And these folks have come and helped us before on some things. And that's definitely something that we would entertain, working with Aaron. I know Aaron's worked with several civic groups and organizations like that, to kind of putting, put that together on what they could help us with. And then look at what we'd have to do later on if they're, if we need to. I know they, they came to me with wanting ideas and wanting to spend some money. So if that's something that they're willing to do, then
We'd be happy to work with them. And I'd have to ask you, were the restrooms clean when you did, visited the restrooms? Were the restrooms clean when you went down there?
Spotless. All right.
What did that mean?
You must knew where you were coming. No.
Good.
Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
You know, I, I agree with Councilor Reiner on the, on the sliding and some of that. I thought about that. And if we went even with hardwood in there, I know in a house the same way you'll, you'll slide. I pronounced your name wrong?
No, you're right.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. But the tile, I've, I've been in them in Fort Worth where they have it. And it looks beautiful. But they take a knife and cut them out. Kids, teenagers. Then you've just got a, a blank wall there. They just cut the footy. And if you wash them with a high pressure, eventually you're gonna eat that out. So I'm thinking that, you know, I think it needs to be done. I would say let, let y'all work on the getting the money. Let him work with the group and come back in thirty days with a plan. That'd be my suggestion. The motion, if you need it.
And I, and I definitely don't want to take anything from Mr. Councilman Couch. He brought this up when we finished up the downtown square. And I think it, we need to make sure that we've got something that is really nice because we've, we've got a nice downtown square. And that's one of the most popular restrooms, you might say, that we go, go into. And so we want to make sure that it is a really nice restroom and that it shows off our downtown as well. So.
And Mayor, the other thing that we, you know, we've, we've had the restroom downstairs open on the weekends.
Down, oh.
As the Granbury is. And, and once they move out, that, that will not be available. So
Well, that's not for sure yet, but we'll, we'll
Unless we make, you know, other arrangements there.
All right. Well, I'm looking for a motion in council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Reiner.
Make a motion that we table this or whatever term we'd like to use until we can further discuss this with potentially the beautification council.
Second.
We have a motion to
Do we need to set a date on this?
If, if it's tabled, it can be brought back up either today or at the next meeting. If we need a specific date, then we want to postpone it definitely to that.
Well, couldn't we, couldn't we do just no, no, no action at this time?
You don't have to take any action.
If you want to rescind your motion and just take no action at this time.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second on that?
No action, no action.
Oh, I think Mr. Couch has a second.
Well, what, what we're doing, we're, she rescind her motion. You're okay with that? She's just gonna rescind, make a motion, we don't take any action at this time?
Okay.
So we have a motion to take no action at this time on this particular item. And we have a second, Mr. Couch?
A motion to take no
Motion to take no action.
[laughing]
So there'll be no action taken on this item at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. And thanks for keeping those restrooms clean so good year round.
Yeah.
Yep.
Our next item is to consider adopting, consider adopting a ordinance eighteen seventeen to establish an ethics code. As you know, this item was originally requested by the city council. And after it was discovered that the city does not have an ethics policy in place, the ordinance seventeen seventy-seven was established and the ethics code was placed on the December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting, but it did not pass. Councilmember Reiner has requested that it be placed on this agenda. So we have before us a, another ethics code. So council, I'm just gonna open this up for discussion at this time. You've had an opportunity to look over the, the, the ethics code.
Mayor, I've got a
Councilman Allen.
I've got a couple of questions. I think it's great we're getting it back on the agenda after all the things that happened. But I'm gonna ask the attorney, when you, did you write the
The code?
Yeah.
I, I did. Well, I wrote the original code that was on the December nineteenth agenda that was presented, that we discussed and I recommended a workshop for. You guys decided to take action and vote that night. And it was voted down. I did not request that this be placed on the agenda tonight. I did not offer it or introduce it. It is a copy of December nineteenth.
So, so you didn't write it?
Yes, you wrote that.
Well, I wrote the original ethics policy. I have not read this one word for word to determine if it's the exact same policy or not. It's a same or similar policy.
Okay. When did you get it?
The, when the agenda was sent out.
Okay. A few things that it says that, you know, they have three candidates, three members. But it doesn't have any term limit on it, you know, one year, two year, three year, or how they're gonna stagger, anything like that.
Which part are you talking about, Mr. Allen?
The three people who are gonna either vote us on or vote us off. It's on page three at the top.
Are you asking me?
No, I'm asking if anybody's got an answer. I don't see it here.
You're asking about item, page three. When, when you guys find this, if you could kind of define which page you're on here.
Okay, go to the page three.
Page three?
At the top. At the top. Says, "Commission will compose the three members drawn at a need from the pool of available candidates." And if you read that whole deal there, it's about the page of it. It didn't say anything for a one-year term, two-year term, or three-year. Only thing I'm thinking is, if you've got them all, one-year term, you'd be replacing them every year, or voting them back in, where most of our deals are staggered, you know, like one year, three year, or two years, I'm saying. That way, they've got new people if we want them on there, you know?
Mr. Mayor.
Hang on, let me see if I can get this one answered. Can you answer that?
I, I'm not the sponsor of this piece of legislation. Whoever sponsored it would be the one. I'm the author of the original, not the plagiarized document that's in here today.
How is this a plagiarized document?
Well, I originally drafted it, and someone else took my work and asked that it be put on the agenda today, apparently.
I don't think it's changed.
So, if this is the exact document?
It's the exact document.
Is it?
I think so.
I thought it was.
From what I'm reading.
Okay.
Nonetheless, I didn't offer it, so, and again, that just goes back to exactly the issue we had on December 19, of the reasoning for needing a workshop to go through and develop these systems that you guys want to put in place.
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, the code very clearly says that my job is the city attorney. You guys as the council, it is your job to legislate. I don't want you to take something that you guys once said was not what we wanted, and now just try to take the same, the same piece of paper and pass it through now without, I mean, if this is the exact same document, then I still stand by what I said that night, and that we need to have a workshop to work through all of these things. We don't even have to have a committee. You guys can say, we just want to name one person as an officer that's going to be an ethics officer for the city. But that's what we need to have a workshop for, to make that determination. What, what are, what are their role, what is their role going to be? Are we going to have preliminary hearings? Are we not going to have preliminary hearings?
Mr. Mayor, just a question is...
Councilman Mobley.
The terms, the terms of these committee members. My interpretation of this is it's an as-needed commission. There's no reason to sit on a commission that's not active and may never be called upon to perform any duty. Now that our city manager is here, let's go ahead and pose the question. Is this the identical document that was proposed back in December?
Yes. I had to look for the lady that keeps track of all that.
So, that answers our question.
I could have answered.
So, it is the exact document that was proposed?
Yes.
So, I agree with the mayor, uh, Mayor, I agree with the attorney. We need to have a workshop on this, and schedule it anytime, and let's get her done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Reiner.
The reason I brought this up is because we needed to readdress it. I don't want it to die. We definitely need...
Okay, I understand that.
So, that's why I asked for it to be on the agenda this evening. I was under the impression that we might get some input, new input, and that I wasn't aware that it was the exact same document that we had originally. I didn't have the old one to compare it to. I do, I'm concerned about a workshop. I don't know if that's necessary. I do think that we need input. I want this done, but I want it done correctly. It needs to be done sooner rather than later, but we need to discuss, I guess what I'm asking is, let's discuss some alternatives to spending an inordinate amount of money, bringing another attorney in, or someone else who is an expert, as I believe was suggested before, to go over this document, and maybe come up with a compromise to a workshop and spending a large amount of money, bring somebody in.
Mayor.
Councilman Couse.
Well, you know, if it's the same document, and we have our city attorney, again, not recommending passing it, I think what's missing in all this is a professional that's seasoned in ethics that could guide us along to get the right draft. And I think that since we're already, we've had Charlie Zech handle the official misconduct aspect of the charter. He also is working with the charter committee, the charter review committee. I think he would be the likely candidate that we could send this draft to him, and have him look at that, come up with his own draft, send it back to us, and have a discussion, again, about, about the aspects of that. I don't want to get in this point by point like I did last time, but I don't think it's, it's a good idea to have an ambiguous document. So, I wish we could address that aspect of it, because this is such an important ordinance that we need to get it right. It's, it affects this council and really councils for decades to come, not to mention all our, our board members, which is, I think, 100 or so.
Well, that's, that's something that we were, we would want to review, because personally, and I think everybody agrees that the, even the title, it, I don't think it should say the City of Granbury Code of Ethics, because the staff, the police department, people like that, they have a code of ethics that they go by. This should probably say the City of Granbury City Council Code of Ethics, because that's who it's for.
Mr. Mayor.
And I, and I would hope that every council member, let me finish here, had read this and realized that it was the same one that they'd read before. Now, if we're just reading the first page, or this, that, or just assuming, then we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, and that's reading the, reading our documents on our, before the council meeting. I've looked over it. I've looked through it. There are some things that I think need to be changed. Is the dais the place to do that? I don't, you know, maybe not, because if I have two or three, four or five, the next council member has four or five, everybody else down the line has four or five things they want to remove or take away from this, then that's what we're doing. We're having a workshop right here in basic. So, maybe we need a workshop, so. Go ahead.
Yes. It's interesting that Charlie Zech was brought up, because I actually had the opportunity to discuss this ordinance with him at another meeting. And I asked him, am I off on this? Am I missing something? Do you think it's not quite right? And I'm going to read you some quotes directly from Mr. Zech. "It's crazy, a stupid thing to do. It's going to be nothing but a political tool. They need to write it to you themselves. It's not your job to legislate." Those are Charlie Zech's words.
I'll add to that.
Go ahead, Chris.
I talked to Charlie today in reference to, he was here yesterday for the charter review committee, and I gave him a copy of this last night, and he promised that we would talk today. He said, "I'm doing this for free. I'm just talking to you. I'm not charging you for what I've done on this, but I don't want to have anything to do with drafting your ethics ordinance. Jeremy has drafted a base to give you something to look at, but by all means, it's nothing that you want to adopt." That's what he told me at 4:30 today. He said, "You should get your council together, and they work it out together, what they want that to say." Because for, you know, we can provide sample ordinances from other cities to give you ideas or something like that, but he feels like Jeremy is qualified to do whatever you ask him to do on this, because he hasn't done anything other than list the law in number 12, which is pretty subjective. And so, there's lots of samples that we can put together for y'all, and let y'all look at those individually, and come together in a workshop, and pick and choose what you kind of like, and then we could maybe copy and paste the document together, and have Jeremy review it. If you want Zech to review it too, we could do that. I don't think that's necessary, but just being on high center is not getting you anywhere, and here talking about it is not getting us anywhere. I'd be happy to do whatever y'all need me to do. I'll facilitate a meeting for you. I do not want this to be my policy.
No.
But, but y'all are in the policy business, and so I'll help you any way you want me to help you, and I'll be glad to get those samples for you, and try to give you some, some guidance, some, some ideas. And, but basically, we're talking culture here. When you're talking about ethics policy, I have an ethics standard that I have to go by. I've got 12 tenets that are established, and, and they, they were adopted by the Texas City Manager Association in 1984, and we continually tweak them. We continually refine them as an organization. And I live by those, and that keeps me above, above any reproach. And y'all don't have any written down anywhere, and I think you need some. But I also would like to say this, and I've mentioned this to a couple of council members already. If we were all up here in, in, in good relationships with each other and trusted each other, we don't need so many rules. And maybe we should spend more time developing relationships among us, and, and that kind of thing, as well as working on ethics code, so.
Mr. Mayor.
My two cents were.
Yeah. Councilman Mobley.
So, again, it astonishes me that many of us live in a world of ethics in our careers. Some of us don't. It's really not that bad. Come on in. Our city manager, our, our police department, our attorney, do you live by code of ethics, do you not?
Sure.
Okay. So, and yet, there's some up here that are going to push back as hard as we can on this. This, as proposed, other than some verbiage as far as the city council code of ethics, as opposed to the City of Granbury code of ethics, there are some references to employees and staff that should be eliminated. It should only apply to elected officials and appointed officials. And yes, if we all had great relationships, and there was all this hugging and trust up here, it wouldn't be a problem. But I think we've seen in, in recent times that we need to have the rules placed before us, or some of us may not understand what is expected of you. And again, why in the world are, do we put these codes on our employees, on our police department, and on the people we work for, and we do work for you? Why do we, as a, as a dais, why do we not embrace the code of ethics? Why is there this pushback? The things that our city attorney has proposed, everything is state statute, except for one item, item number 12. And I'll read that to you. Item number 12 states, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, because Mr. Couse did a great job of that last one, but "to carefully consider the public perception of personal and professional actions, and the effects such actions could have positively or negatively on the city's reputation, both in the community and elsewhere." The feedback I got from Mr. Zech was that that's the only thing there that, that kind of stands out as, is, is kind of an awkward clause. But if you know the history of how we got to this point, we have to put something in there that has a lot of latitude to where, no, this will not be used as a weapon. No, it will not be used as a tool to punish, but it will be used as a tool to hold people accountable. We're not headhunters up here. We don't want to lop off each other's heads. What we want to do is show people that we're not afraid to hold ourselves accountable. And, and I find it offensive that anybody, anybody submits anything to this council and doesn't stand behind it. And I, and I was frustrated last time. I'm even more frustrated today. But, and, and if the advice is, we have a workshop, then for goodness sakes, let's have a workshop and get this done. I can assure you folks, as long as I'm sitting up here, this will not go away. This will not go away. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, can I talk for a second?
Councilman Allen.
Well, first of all, I, I agree with Councilman Mobley, and I know this thing's been going on and on and on, and we definitely want to do it, do it right. And I did read the whole entire deal. Actually, I read it twice, to actually call Jeremy. Jeremy didn't ask him, and that's whenever, I think he realized that they'd sent us the same one. But what I'd like to see us do, the next meeting, we won't have 18 items and three different deals in the back room to talk about. I'd, I'd make a motion that we would have a workshop two hours before the council meeting on the 20th. That's two weeks.
Take more than two hours.
Yeah.
Take more than two hours.
Take what? More than two hours?
Councilman Mobley, um, Councilman Couse, you had something?
Well, I mean, the inference that Councilman Mobley is using is that we don't want an ethics policy, and that is absolutely false.
Speaking of Mike, it's raining now.
I, I want an ethics policy, but I also realize that none of us up here are attorneys that are council members, so I heed the advice of legal. And now we have a second attorney, well-versed in these matters, saying, "Don't do this." It's my responsibility to, to listen to them. Otherwise, why do we need a city attorney? I think the fastest way to get something adopted is to get a professional to draft something that's well-versed, that can present it to us, and we can pass it. And so, that would be my proposal.
Okay. I would ask the council, it sounds like everybody read this one. So, if you read it, what would be wrong with approving what we have in front of us, and then we go forward, and we start tweaking it? Because then you have the foundation, you have an ethics code, which, reading through it, it covers a lot of things, and I think I could live by it. But there are the title, for instance, things like that, but that's, you know, we can, we can read through that. But then, I, I talked to some of the mayors at this last conference I went to, and that's exactly what, they're all, and when new council members come on, they start tweaking it. They tweak it as they go, all the time. And that's what we're going to end up doing, even with the workshop. We're going to be tweaking this thing, so.
You know, you know, Mayor, whenever, about a year or two ago, maybe three, I put on the agenda for the council to have drug passed, same as we do our people that does driving equipment stuff, which has failed. I'm saying, I don't really think we need to hire an outside expert. I think we've got a good guy here that's drafted it up. It needs to be tweaking. Let's have a workshop on the 20th and get this so with. Or we can, or we can vote it in tonight with three votes or five votes, and then we'll put it, I'll put it right back on the agenda for a workshop the following meeting. Whichever way y'all want to do it.
Well, Mayor, what if, what if the direction was to our city attorney to remove the ambiguity in this document? And bring it back to the council?
What are you wanting to remove?
The ambiguities. Anything that, that isn't defined gets defined.
That's subjective, though.
Yeah, that's what I say. Everybody's got their own personal one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, Councilperson Reiner.
It appears that I'm the only one that is opposed to a workshop on the dais. Well, if it, if it helps to get this through and get it done correctly, I don't think it needs to be an all-day process, and I would like to know what it's going to cost us before we determine whether we should do that or not. But I would be willing to, to do that if it's a short timeframe. My, my concern with the workshop is, we've all had a chance to do, do some thinking and give input to Jeremy on this, and we still haven't done it. So, is it now going to take a workshop to force us to, to do this? We already should have been giving him input, so that we could have had a better document this evening. So, if that's, if it takes a workshop to get us thinking and moving forward, pressing forward, I'm not happy about it, but I'll do it.
I think that's a good idea, and I'll go for that.
Well...
Councilman Couse.
I'd like to ask Jeremy. Jeremy, do you feel that you're qualified to give us an ethics code that is not going to get us into trouble? Or do you think we need someone more seasoned in this arena?
I'm not, I'm not certain that I really understand your question. My, my job is not to give you an ethics code. That's what I've been saying from the beginning. My job is to provide you with a base and the law for you to provide yourselves with an ethics code, and then I will review it and tell you if there are constitutional or legal issues involved in that code.
And that's what anybody would...
That's what I've been saying from the beginning.
Anybody would do that, is if they look at this, we don't put something in there that is unconstitutional or illegal. I mean, we can put all kinds of stuff in our own ethics code.
I'll offer this, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, I'm not a policy developer. I'm not in charge of policy for your, I'm in charge of administration.
I know.
I want to make that real clear. But I will work with Jeremy, do 80% of the work, and have him review it, a draft similar to what you have here, to try to remove the concerns that y'all have voiced to me individually, and still try to come up with something that everyone can be happy with. And realize it's your code, and then you come together and tweak what we talked about, what I drafted. Because if we don't, we're going to end up going to a public workshop, and I'm thinking I probably have something put together in two weeks for you, and we can put it on the agenda and spend 30 minutes, and maybe we'll have something everybody's happy with.
Mr. Mayor.
And I do that as an olive branch, outside my responsibility, but I do have some expertise in writing policy.
What would happen?
What would happen? Read his job.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Reiner.
Chris, in addressing that, it sounds to me like the only issue is item 12 with the ambiguity and lack of direction in that one particular thing. So, it might not take you that long.
I think Jeremy probably has some wording right now that he could throw... Shed some light on 12, but again, there may be some other areas that I need to vet with these other people. I have a lot more than...
I do, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Jeremy?
Look, I have in the past broken down this entire ordinance. I'm not certain as to what exactly anyone's referring to that they believe may be ambiguous. You'd have to pinpoint something for me, but what I can tell you just briefly is, if we go through the code of ethics, 1 through 12, number one is already covered under the Texas Local Government Code, sections 551 and 552, and are enforced by the Attorney General of the state of Texas, and are misdemeanors, misdemeanor crimes. Number two, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, federal law, covers every single bit of that. Number three, Local Government Code 176, enforced by the AG. It's a misdemeanor A, B, or C, depending upon the amounts. There's nothing ambiguous about that. Number four, Texas Penal Code 3608D covers that. You go to the district attorney, it's a Class A misdemeanor. Number five is 36.02 of the Texas Penal Code. It's essentially bribery. It's a second-degree felony. Number six, again, 171 and 176 of the Texas Local Government Code. Number seven, Texas Local Government Code 203.021 sets out the requirements for keeping public records. Also, for the penal purposes of the Penal Code, 3710 is tampering with governmental records, which is what that would amount to. Number eight, Penal Code 39.06, misuse of official information, third-degree felony. Number nine, protect and serve the city property. That's Penal Code 30.02, abuse of official capacity. It can be anywhere from a Class C all the way up to a first-degree felony. Number 10, disclosing waste, fraud, and abuse, again, 3902 of the Penal Code, 3903 of the Penal Code. Any number of statutes apply to that section, and those are all investigated by the Office of the Inspector General. Number 11, never ask or direct any official or employee to violate any provision of this code of ethics. Well, if you did, any of 1 through 10, direct them, then under the Penal Code 1502 or possibly 1503, you have either committed conspiracy to commit one of those crimes or you have engaged in solicitation of one of those crimes. Nothing ambiguous. Number 12. Number 12, I have no idea what that even means. It's extremely subjective. It's going to be person to person who's going to make a determination as to what that actually means. I think better wording for that would be something such as, "Council members shall not misrepresent themselves either personally or as a council member to the public at any time." It can just be that simple.
So, move.
Well, Mayor, then, I would like to go ahead and make a motion and take Chris up on his offer to work with Jeremy on a draft, a revised draft of this ordinance and come back to council in two weeks.
We have a motion from Councilman Couch to... I don't want to use a word with Chris, but working with the city attorney and the city manager and come back to the dais in two weeks.
Second, Mayor.
I don't see how that's going to work.
I don't need to have a workshop. And we have a second on that one. Now, counsel, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'm hoping this is not a time-killing workshop.
Well, they didn't call it a workshop.
Well, whatever it ends up being. I think our city attorney sold this as it should have been sold back in December by showing how nonsensical it is to argue these points because it is state law, and the fact that we resist embracing these, I think, shows our lack of commitment. So, thank you for that. We're just a couple of weeks later. That's the discussion.
If I may, my issue is more than that. My issue is, you know, Chris and I can go back and draft something and come back to you, and it still may not be what you want. We need your input. For example, do you want a commission? Do you want a board? What do you want the sanctions to be? I mean, we can sit here and imagine 100 different things, but we don't know what you want.
That's why I suggested a one-hour workshop.
Alan, let him finish.
How are we going to enforce this? You know, what specifically would you like further definition on? Those are my issues with it. It's not the substance that goes in here. It's the form by which this is going to be legislated. I mean, if someone comes in and files a complaint, what do we do next? What is the procedure for that?
We follow the Charlie Zech plan that was established back in December.
Okay, we need a workshop for you guys to say that so we can implement all of these programs.
We just said it. That's already established. That was the first step in this whole process.
Well, that's just one issue. I mean, there are multiple issues at hand.
Well, you answered that one.
Right.
Okay, counsel, we got... Do you have another statement, Mr. Couch?
No, I'm just... Mayor, I just briefly, I...
Bob Corgan, okay.
I tend not to make a lot of comments because I try to get my answers prior to council meeting, but going over this, like has been said multiple times, other than number 12, it's all state law. We just fixed the issue on when someone files a complaint, how do we go forward? You know, I... To make everyone happy, I would be more than fine with letting this come back in the next council meeting, but at the end of the day, 1 through 11 is not the issue. If you have an issue with number 12, we've already got wording that solves that problem, and you go on and be forth, and we can all be merry and vote this in, but...
And have an ethics code.
At the end of the day, like has been said several times, it's all state law. It's not subjective. It's not someone's opinion. It is what it is. Reword number 12, and let's go forward.
Any more discussion, counsel? We have a motion and a second. Motion by Counsel and a second by Mr. Allen to have the city manager and attorney review this or work on this and bring it back in two weeks. No more discussion? Councilperson Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley.
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Corgan?
Aye.
That is approved, so we will come back or wait for Mr. Kaufman and attorney to set this up and hopefully come back in a couple of weeks with something else. Our next item. Consider authorizing our city manager to utilize city equipment and staff to plant a tree for the Hood County Commission's on Aging. It's a senior center building located at 501 East Moore Street. Mr. Kaufman, you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
It's good to have an easy agenda item.
I think the tree's already planted.
They're wanting to buy a tree in honor of a stellar volunteer and plant it in her honor, and they asked me if we could bring a backhoe over to dig the hole, and I said, "Well, why don't I just get permission to plant the tree?" So, we'll go from there.
I'm going to use your term, "get her done," right?
Get her done.
So, there you have it, counsel. They want to plant a tree up there. Aaron said that it's not a problem with him, right, Aaron? So... So, there you have it. Any discussion on planting a tree? Didn't think there would be.
Get her done.
All in... I need a motion. Who wants to make a motion to authorize the city manager to utilize city equipment to plant a tree? We have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Plant the tree. We're now going to executive session. I'll narrow the clear that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session and all members are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the attorney contained in the following sections, section 551-087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development, and section 551-074, Personnel Matters. Plant city manager's review. Counselors, any more discussion? If there is no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.